Okay, I call to order this meeting of the Board of Education. It is Monday, November 29, 2021. It is -- oh, I'm sorry. Can we start the recorder? Sorry. It is 6:03. I am obviously not Heather Raymond. She is out tonight, so bear with me and my nerves. But I'll be facilitating this meeting. So if everyone could be on their best behavior, that would be fantastic. Ms. Giglio, can you -- Ms. Giglio is going to take my spot as clerk. Can you do the roll call?
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Giglio is here.
Oh, turn your mic on. Mike?
Sorry. Okay, Ms. Bishop, Ms. Giglio is here. Ms. Raymond is not here tonight. Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson is not here. Ms. DeGherino?
Here.
Ms. Seem is not here, nor is Ms. Timmons. So we do have a courtroom.
Okay. We also have Mr. Donovan, Dr. McKinney, Dr. Sarpde, our student reps, Ms. Brunel, and Mr. Spencer. Don, why do I have Mr. Spencer? There'll be a lot of that tonight. And we can start with the prayer.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Odin, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So up first tonight, we have two presentations, one by Main Dunstable and one by Mount Pleasant. And it looks like we're all teed up for the Mount Pleasant one. So if Mr. Boardman and Ms. Saroni want to join us, we welcome you.
Good evening. Again, my name is Richard Boardman. I'm the principal over at Mount Pleasant Elementary School.
And I'm Amanda Saroni, the assistant principal at Mount Pleasant.
And we just start by kind of saying thank you for this opportunity to be here and share with you and share with the community a little bit about our school. But we'd have to be honest and say that, like at first, we were quite literally afraid and we were petrified. And I will be honest and say when we wrote that, we did start singing. But and it wasn't necessarily to, you know, just to be here because we could talk at nauseam about how wonderful we think our school is and kind of all the great things that are going on. But it was more trying to think, how do we kind of compress and synthesize and condense, you know, the things that we would like to share in a short timeframe? And when we really thought about it, we obviously came to that conclusion that the best answer is often the most simple. And that is, who is Mount Pleasant and what makes us so special? Well, that's our staff and our students and our families that we serve. I think both Ms. Saroni and myself would say, in any interview we've done, anytime somebody has kind of asked us to describe our school, we always start and talk about how one of the reasons that we were drawn to want to join the community was because of the strength of the staff and the students and because of the compassion of our families. So what we want to share with you is a little bit about each of those groups, specifically the staff and students, and some of the things that they've been working on really for a year and a half, almost two years. So we're going to kind of take you in the Wayback Machine and go back to March 2020 because that was a really fun time to think about. But it was around that time that we, as most administrators will do, we were thinking about our goals for the following school year. So, you know, kind of come out of February break and you're already thinking about, what do we need to do to set our goals for the, what would at that point have been the 2021 school year? And we already knew that we wanted to make some shifts in the climate and culture in our school. You know, we both pride ourselves on kind of the caring compassionate nature that we want all, every member of our school community to have. And we wanted to make things better. And we decided that kind of two initiatives that we were going to take on was to become a trauma-responsive school. We're going to talk more about that in a second. And then also to engage with an organization called Playworks, and we will talk more about that in a second. So we were, we were super stoked. We were ready to go. And then the world changed. And I'm not going to take us through that time, but I think what's, it's almost serendipitous because it allowed us to not have to change our focus, but it actually made it even more important that we dove into that work and found a way. So throughout the course of the remote and hybrid school year of last year of 2021, we did continue with our work in becoming a trauma-responsive school. We did continue our work in, in working with Playworks. And we're excited to say at this point, as we're now in our 2122 school year, that we're in much more of a full implementation of both of those initiatives. So now we're just going to take you through a couple of quick slides to talk about what those mean and what it's done for our school community.
So the first one is talking about our trauma-responsive school. And in doing this, you know, we had set up a plan to start, hit the ground running with this. And like Mr. Boardman said, that kind of switched a little bit. So we spent a lot of time really on, we had Zoom meetings, obviously, and we talked a lot about how we could reduce the stress for our staff and really talk about the trauma that we were all experiencing. I mean, we all bring different pieces of trauma, but we were all experiencing, you know, the COVID trauma at that time. So we set out to really support our staff so that they in turn could support their students and they would be more available. From there, we spent a lot of time working with Allison Roy on understanding the different kinds of behaviors and why our students were having these behaviors instead of just reacting, having some understanding about why our students might be having these behaviors. And how we did that, like I said, was with lots of training, tons of information. It really gave us the foundations that we can talk about those challenging behaviors in a different way, really do some deep thinking on our own parts about how, you know, things in our past might shift the way we see things with kids. So we did some meetings, like it says, presentations, case studies. We did large and small group sessions, really to address the different needs of our staff. From there, we this year have really worked on our TRUST, which is our Trauma Responsive Unified Support Team. And it's a new model for student concerns. And we actually created this and we are piloting it. And it's now actually being shared across the state by Dr. Roy. You know, it's something very simple for any staff member to fill out a Google form just so that we can get some information and then we can meet with the teacher so that we can work together to create a plan to support students. And it's really talking about what their overall needs are, not just their academic needs. This is really looking at the trauma piece. We're looking, you know, seeing a culture shift and we're seeing it. We're seeing less office referrals than ever before, reduced time spent with those big emotions and behaviors. And our kids are really making great gains this year because we have the staff who know the, you know, they understand the history and they understand the process of trauma.
So the other initiative we kind of took on was collaborating with an organization called Playworks. And essentially what we were able to do was, was through some grant funding, was work with that organization and have somebody who came to our school, you know, obviously first it was kind of virtually and then more in person. And there was some training for staff, in particular, things that they could do during their classroom meeting times, just overall philosophical approach as to why recess is so important. And then, you know, the most significant part of the program was or is called the Junior Coaches Program. So we took a group of, who at the time were fourth grade students, now they're our fifth grade students, and they actually became trained on how to facilitate recess activities. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of positives from it. I think we would say often, some of the challenges we face is that our kids, like they literally just don't know how to play anymore. And that's a big generalization, I understand, but so many of our students have a hard time regulating that playtime. They don't know how to win and lose sort of appropriately. They don't know how to sort of manage their emotions when that happens. And so inevitably, what ends up happening is they just play this one big giant game of chase, which is, you know, not, not positive outcomes for anybody. So we're really focusing on how to make recess more enjoyable, how to make it more inclusive so that everybody has an opportunity to be included, how to make it a little more structured so that it can still be fun, but done more in a structured way. Obviously, the focus areas up there being safety and engagement and empowerment. And that, you know, the junior coach piece, it really is, it's, it helps because they go out to recess with their younger classmates. And so it helps, you know, those younger classmates in terms of having a mentor, but it has really also helped these fifth graders take on a leadership role within the school. And so I think that we've seen sort of just the positive benefits, positive outcomes already. So to wrap things up, because I know that my counterpart from Main Dunstable is getting ever so anxious and nervous waiting for us to finish, that, you know, what do we have now? We have progress. We have hope, which is probably the most powerful thing that we could have. We have staff that are even more determined, they're even more empathetic, more caring than before. We have more kids who are learning how to play in a positive way, kids who are learning how to lead in a positive way. We have seen, in my opinion, a positive shift in our overall school climate and culture. And I would say I'm just really proud of our staff and our students for their kind of resilience and, you know, I didn't, actually, we didn't put the numbers up there because I didn't want it to be about this, but obviously, we like data, so we looked at some data. And I will tell you that to the last time that we had any, you know, real disciplined data was from 2019. So in 2000, in the fall of 2019, till the start of school, to the end of November, we had 22 office referrals just from the playground. So just during recess time, we had 22 office referrals for a range of negative behavior. This year, in 2021, from the beginning of the year until today, so obviously, there's still a day in the month, but we had two. So we went from 22 office referrals to two. Now, I would also add, neither one of us is naive enough to think that there's, that Playworks and trauma is, trauma, trauma-responsive are the only reasons for that. But we would like to believe that those two programs that our kids and our staff are working so hard to implement have certainly helped that. I think we would also share, for both of these programs, part of it, as Ms. Saroni said, is taking away the big emotions, reducing the amount of time that kids are out of the classroom or that they're heightened by their emotions. So at this point, we have done our benchmark assessments for reading. So that would be fluency in reading and comprehension. We've done those twice. We did it once at the very beginning of the year and we just did another round. 100% of our students who were assessed made gains either in their fluency or their comprehension. And we had over 67% of our students went up more than two reading levels. And again, it's not to say this is the only reason, but it certainly suggests that the shift in our climate and culture has, is helping, is helping these students make better gains and growth. And there is hope. Thanks.
Thank you so much for that. That was fascinating. I think I'll let you, does it, Ms. Paradise, do you have a presentation as well?
Yeah.
Okay. So we need to let you hook up to the computer. Okay. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can, we'll go ahead. We can talk about the consent agenda. Are there any items that we want removed from the consent agenda? No? Okay. So I would be looking for a motion to, or is there any communications outside the consent agenda that we need to add? No? Okay. So I would be looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll set a second.
Okay. So that was Ms. Odin and Mr. DeGherino. Giving time. One second. Okay. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No. Motion passes. And can't start public comment yet. Oh, it's going on. Thank you so much.
Apologies for the technical difficulties. Not a great way to start, especially when I have to follow Mr. Boardman. So I am the proud principal of Main Dunstable. My name is Kelly Parity, and with me tonight, I have Avery DeHoyas. Avery DeHoyas is a fifth grader at our school. And when I knew that we were charged with highlighting things that happened in our school, I knew that I wanted to include a student in our process. So tonight, we're going to talk about an annual event that occurs at Main Dunstable and also the impact that it's had on our school community, both inside the building and in our hearts and outside in the playground. So that's sort of our theme tonight, unexpectedly. Avery is the person that I am so glad to be sitting next to tonight. I wanted a fifth grade student who had charisma and character and courage, and she does embody all three of those things. So I'm really pleased that she's with us tonight. And I also needed someone who had time in her schedule, and she goes to the before-school program. So we worked really hard in the before-school program to put this slideshow together for you, and you will see that it has her flair. And as the adult who felt, felt this needed to be really professionally edited, and then I, she wanted to add some of these adorable pieces to it, and that's what we're all about. So I'm really glad that she was here to join us as well. So we're here to talk about, Avery, you can go first.
Our Main Dunstable mascot is the Blue Hawk.
Doesn't seem to go any lower. So a few years ago, when one of our parents shared a new fundraising idea, it was named the Hawk Walk.
We raise money by getting pledges from family and friends, and then our whole school walks around the school property.
It's a healthy and fun way to raise money for our school.
It feels special because we all get a free Hawk Walk t-shirt. It's a great way for everyone to show their school spirit.
This year, Tokyo Joes kicked off our Hawk Walk with exercises regarding self-discipline and self-confidence.
Since our Hawk Walk started when I was a kindergartner, it has raised over $130,000.
The money has helped pay for such things as new technology items, field trips, and children's programming. Here is the mosaic we made with our last artist in residence.
Ooh, ah.
Oh, it's an antiphonal response. So Avery, the crowd wants to do it with you. Ready? Ooh.
But the most exciting thing is that the Hawk Walk fundraiser helped pay for our new playground.
We also want to thank the school district for installing it. So I'm going to go back a moment, actually, pre-COVID. So a couple of years ago, the last time I sat in this horseshoe, we came with a proposal for putting together the playground, and I see Dottie nodding. And the parents did an unbelievable job in the fundraising element of it. And when you see things on a drawing, it has so much less impact than when you see things with children actually there. So the school district comes and installs the playground once it is purchased. So I want to thank the district for doing the installation piece. So our school, our playground features a new basketball hoop.
Boink. New activity pathways.
New equipment.
And new buddy benches.
The students even got to vote on a new name for our playground. The Hawks Nest got the most votes.
We had fun at this year's Hawk Walk. We hope you liked learning about it and our new playground. Wiggle, wiggle, wiggle.
Your turn. So thank you much, thank you very much for having us here tonight and sharing something that we really did want to highlight, that these are times that we want children to celebrate joy. And also to thank the district for their part in helping this actualize. Mostly, our parents are to be credited for the incredible amount of work that they do for every Hawk Walk, especially the one that got us right into the tipping point of getting $100,000 for a new playground. They are to be extremely commended for that. We will forever be grateful, or for at least the next 20 years, because my learning has been that a playground lasts about 20 years before the hawks and bolts start to fall out. So thank you to everyone who's had a part in helping our school and helping our kids enjoy life at Main Dunstable.
Thank you guys so much. That was a lot of fun to see. I want to go back to elementary school. You guys are having so much fun out there. Thank you all for coming. Want to thank our guests. I think that was fantastic to hear. It's great to hear what's going on in the schools with the kids that, you know, everybody's putting some time and attention into. So I'm grateful that we're doing these again, these presentations. Feel like we took a break when we were Zooming in, so this is a nice, it's refreshing. This brings us up to our first public comment period. Yep, public comment period. Thank you, Mr. DeGherino. I'm just assuming he's getting me the paper. Okay. Just want to remind you, first, public comment period is for items on the agenda. And I am not as good at this as Heather is. So if you want to just kind of highlight what part of the agenda you're speaking to, that would be fantastic. And then go on with your comment, if that's okay. We're going to keep it to three minutes each, which is what we normally do. So Ms. Giglio will take over my role of manning the timer. We have 15 minutes scheduled for this. We'll reassess when we hit the 15-minute mark, if that's okay. So the first person that we have on is Gary Hoffman.
All right. Can you hear me? All right. Gary Hoffman, 38, Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. First, I'd like to thank that the Ed Council minutes were added to the agenda. I served as a representative on Ed Council for nearly a decade, and I have to say is one of the most valuable committees out there. But because of the pandemic, the council met for the first time in a year and a half only two weeks ago. It's a great forum where union representatives sit down with members of the school board and the superintendent to discuss what's happening in our district. Last meeting, the union's Ed Council's representatives brought forth many working condition issues that they have received from dozens of staff members from all three levels. I only have three minutes, so I can't list them all right now. So please take a look at those minutes when you get a chance. But more importantly, that begs an important question. Why are there so many issues right now? I've been doing union work for 15 years, and I've never received so many concerns and complaints. I personally do not believe that it's any one person's fault that all this stuff is happening at once. For example, no one here is responsible for the increased paperwork demands on our special educators. That was the government that did that. No one here is responsible for the fact that it's now more difficult for principals to suspend students, or that we lost our only school resource officer for the middle and elementary level, or that because of increased COVID numbers, we've received a year's worth of special education referrals all at once, or that because of an increased number of COVID cases in our city, teachers are having to use their limited planning time to gather work for kids who are going to be out for as much as 10 days. It's no administrator's fault that national TikTok challenges are causing kids to misbehave in ways we've never seen before, or that because of the pandemic learning loss during remote learning, teachers are having to considerably revamp the way they teach to meet the needs of today's learners, or that because of difficult working conditions, a tight labor market, low pay, we're down dozens of par educators and food service workers, and started this year with more open teaching positions than ever, or that because we can't find subs, the very few pairs that we do have are being used as substitute teachers to cover teachers who are out sick because of COVID. Those are just some of the issues that are happening right now in our district, and they are adversely affecting working conditions for all our staff, our principals, teachers, pairs, food service workers, nurses, secretaries, you name it. So my thing is this, so what can we do? Well, first, we can acknowledge that it's happening. The district and the staff in this district are under increased stress like we've never seen before. And no, we don't need another self-care seminar, more professional development. That stuff just takes time from the day that we really don't have right now. What we need are lighter workloads. Let me repeat, what we need are lighter workloads. So here are some ideas. Cancel all unnecessary meetings, even if they technically fit under the contract. Let the ELL teachers, the guidance counselors, and special educators use that time to do their mountains of paperwork. Cancel all unnecessary duties. Reduce the number of observations for principals. Give them some extra time and reduce educators' stress. Hire some secretaries to help out our ELL teachers, our special educators, because I know we can't find special educators right now. And at the next month's agenda, put on working conditions and see how we're doing. I'm really worried, folks. If we don't do something now, we're going to lose a lot of good people. But we have to do it now. Thank you for listening. And I just want to remind everyone, while all this stuff happening, our food service workers and our teachers have been without a contract for three months.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Next up is Mabel Brown.
Hello, my name is Mabel Brown. I've been a teacher here at Nashua High School North for 16 years. On our Election Day workshop, Nashua High School's teachers were asked to sit in an auditorium to hear about social-emotional learning for six hours. While there was good material regarding childhood trauma and its effect on mental health, there was no information or effort as to how these needs would be addressed beside it being the teacher's responsibility. I was frustrated then angry that as professionals working in the classroom, we were not asked for our suggestions on how to meet the needs of students or how we can implement change. Instead, we were lectured. And while the burnout rate amongst teachers was mentioned, no change has been planned or implemented for improvement. Little did I know that two days after experiencing this lecture, in line of my duties as a teacher, I would experience the most humiliating day of my life. And I came to the realization that none of the information we learned about students' trauma applied to teachers in the eyes of the district. It has been four weeks and two students created the Masturbation Club flyer with my name and email listed on it as advisor. It was then posted-- It was then posted to the walls of numerous boys' bathrooms. As my colleague and I were discussing how difficult teacher has become with students who have little accountability, my administrator handed me the flyer midway through my first block, my plan. I looked at it in horror, barely able to comprehend the sexual nature of the words I read. My name. There was my name written bold beneath the name of the club, and at the bottom was my email. There was no mistaking that a student maliciously planned and wrote this. In fact, it struck me at how well-written this flyer was made. It looked professional. The shock and horror I felt about this incident got worse within minutes. When on my way to class, a teacher stopped me to let me know that several of her students had received Snapchats of the flyer. This was 20 minutes after the first pamphlet was found. I walked into my classroom, where I have experienced continued harassment with this class since the very first day of school. They make animal and bodily functional noises while I write on the board. I had been told on several occasions to F off when a student was told to place their phone on my desk because they were using it in class. I've been called, what are you crazy? What are you stupid? For taking a phone. When I was out sick, a substitute wrote me a note starting with, my deepest sympathies, you do not get paid enough for this. There were students openly making fun of the substitute that day, calling him Bernie Sanders. Students were dancing around the classroom, making TikTok videos, et cetera. That day, two other teachers witnessed the horror and chaos of whatever I had been dealing with. I tried using some of the emotional learning techniques in this class that I used during online learning and from previous workshops. For instance, at the end of each month, I check on my students, how they are dealing with the level of classwork and how they are doing in general. During this activity, they have control over the class, and my sole job is to write down and listen to feedback I get. This class instead complained about my cellphone policy and how it made them want to use their phones more. They didn't like that I enforced the tardy policy. One student wanted me to start buying snacks for all the students. After the behaviors were not improving, I had emailed the parents of these students to tell them how difficult these actions had been for a functioning classroom, but it did not curb the conduct. And yet there I was on a Thursday, keeping the humiliation of the Masturbation Club to myself, struggling to keep the shaking at a minimum, as I handed out papers knowing that one of them had perpetrated this sexual violation. Since being in this district, I have created two classes. I've been in the curriculum writing for several others. I have carried home hours of schoolwork while balancing my family. The 16 years of this district, for eight of them, I have been paid $10,000 to $20,000 less than teachers in surrounding communities.
Could you try to wrap it up? I'm sorry, I'm letting you go over your three minutes. It's very important, but if you could pull it together, that would be.
I have traveled with my Model E1 students around the Northeast, often using my own money to help pay for meals, et cetera, and for those students who couldn't afford otherwise. I was not even given a stipend for this club for 10 years. Currently, as all of this is happening, we teachers are once again working without a contract, being asked to again give up more money. I've given my heart and soul believing I can make a difference. It is important that I also mention that I have been blessed with some of the wonderful students who keep in touch. Five days before all this happened, my sister and father went to a winery in California. They happened to be served by his former student of mine, who told them I was a strong woman and an important inspiration in her life. It was these words that got me through Thursday, then Friday, and beyond. I struggled to remember these words when my nieces in another town got the Snapchat for the Masturbation Club. Another level of humiliation. I struggled to remember these words when my mom broke down crying over what had been done to me. We are teachers, we are humans, and we have always been challenged by our students, but it's a different profession now. Our voices are disregarded for the change that is needed in the classroom. Instead, we are lectured as to what is best. We have become political targets. We hurt, we cry, we feel the political and careless Facebook posts from the community, many who have no idea what is happening at the schools. It is time for change. It is time for us to be protected. It is time for us to be listened to. This incident that has ripped me at my core but will not define me, it is out of this experience that I want to be a part of an avenue of change. The conversation for change needs to be planned now, not later, but now. No more adding work to our positions. We are a district in crisis, and it is time for this to stop. Teachers need to be the front runners for this change. We are the avenue of change. We are in the classroom, and we know what is best for our students. It is time for us to be empowered to make our classrooms safer and productive. Enough with legislation, passing laws, of what they think about what's happening in our classroom. We are the change, and without our voices and interventions, this crisis will continue to wither away our effectiveness. Since the day I learned about the Masturbation Club, the voice inside my head reiterates over and over, I don't have any more to give. This trauma has stolen so much. This didn't just happen to me. This happened to the teachers. This happened to the union behind you. This is what we are facing, and it's got to stop.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next on the list is Maureen Pat.
Maureen Pat, 7C Taggart Drive. I ask for a little grace with the time also. When I practiced, it was three minutes, but I'm nervous and I can't breathe. I am currently in my 30th year of teaching in Nashua. In that time, I've spent half my years at Led Street and half at Broad Street. I've also served as NTU president, vice president, grievance chair, negotiating team member, building rep, and AFTNH president. I've lost track of the number of superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals, and assistant principals in the district in those years, all of whom I've had to work closely with due to my many roles in the teaching world. It's exhausting thinking about the number of times I've had to switch gears based on the whims of any given administrator at any one time. There's an article floating around in the education forums right now called "The Door Principle." The basic premise is that most teachers really enjoy the things that happen on the classroom side of their doors, such as interacting with kids, helping them understand new concepts, and watching them grow. It's what happens on the other side of the door that drives burnout. That's where the true hatred, dread, and burnout occur. On the other side, there are administrators who haven't been in classrooms for years who dictate how they teach and what good teaching is. There are politicians who refuse to fund schools properly and hang test scores over our heads in the process. I'm here tonight to speak about some of the issues on the other side of our door here in Nashua. Given my limited amount of time to speak, I'll focus solely on our workload and the lack of training we've had to deal with most of it. In the last five years, we have changed the elementary report cards a staggering three times. First, we switched our platform to Teacher Ease from X2. Then we completely changed the report card, but continued using Teacher Ease. Now we are switching back to X2. If my math is correct, we've had 10 full professional days and roughly 35 early releases as possible opportunities for training on three new report cards. I've not wasted my time researching how many of those fantastic opportunities were actually used in that capacity, but I can tell you, it is not 10 or 35, or any number close to those. It has taken me five years of frustration to come and speak publicly about this lack of training for an extremely important aspect of our jobs. I'm not one to come and air the grievances without having done the background work and research, so I'm here to tell you about the attempted steps I personally have taken in five years to try and procure some much-needed and valuable training opportunities, especially in regards to report cards. In the fall of the year, we switched to Teacher Ease. I emailed Assistant Superintendent McKinney about my concerns with the direction the trainings were taking. As a union representative and employee, I thought I had the right to share with him that my coworkers were panicking. I mistakenly thought he'd appreciate the perspective of a veteran teacher. I shared my opinion that it was overwhelming to teach the aspects of gradebook first without having taught us the new report card, what it looked like, or how we would use it. I told him it felt backwards to us that showing us the end product first so we could see the big picture would be more concrete way for us to understand it. Dr. McKinney did not respond to my email. Instead, he forwarded my email to my principal, along with an attached copy of the POPS policy on ethics, and told her to talk to me about not following the chain of command. I'm extremely fortunate that she had a level head, told me about it, and shared a chuckle. In the fall of the year, we rolled out the new report card last year. It was not uploaded or ready for input until it was almost time for us to use them.
Could you try to wrap it up, please? I'm giving you extra time.
Would you forego my three minutes?
Okay.
Three more.
Hold on one second. So we're actually at the 15-minute mark. I understand that it's a little bit of a reach that we're going off of the Ed Council notes to do this in the first public comment period. But I think we're going to put a pause on the public comment because we hit the 15 minutes, but you guys can all talk again in the next section where it's probably more appropriate, because even though it was in the notes or in the minutes, it wasn't necessarily on the agenda.
Can I finish while I'm mad?
Yeah, finish while you're mad. So I think it's just attached to the notes, but it is still at the 15-minute mark, so.
May I finish?
Yes, Mr. Grino?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we extend the 15-minute period to allow the teachers to finish what they have to say.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When we could finally access it, I again emailed Dr. McKinney because he had led our summer work on creating the report card, and as a member of that committee, I wanted to ask for his memory on something we had worked on that didn't look correct to me. Once again, he didn't answer me directly, but forwarded it to the elementary coach, who had also been on the committee with us, and she answered me. There was also no response about the glitches to the report card and how some teachers had lost all of their work due to the lack of training and lack of preparedness by the district. This also was the same year that Dr. McKinney sent a screenshot of one of my Facebook posts to my still-level-headed principal. It was about new guided reading books not arriving until October that year, and no formal training in the use of it being offered. He once again told her to talk to me about it. She did. She told me that she told him I was right. This year, with report card number three, I again had serious concerns about switching from Teacher Ease back to X2. November workshop day came and went with no formal training on using them. In fact, we spent a third of our day analyzing data instead. We were legitimately asked to analyze why our students failed the end-of-year state exams at the beginning of the year. And we had to come up with an action plan. My personal action plan is to teach them third grade. It's a plan I've used for 30 years with success. Then early release came and went with no training. Instead, we have been offered optional videos to watch and a quick presentation by the technology coach at a faculty meeting. My building's meeting is on December 1st. The report card window closes on December 8th. Hoping the third time would be the charm, I again attempted to communicate directly with Dr. McKinney. I'm either stubborn or stupid, I haven't decided yet. He was doing his luncheon tour of the elementary school, so I went armed with a list of concerns I had called for my coworkers to make the best use of the half hour he was granting us. I won't share now what every concern was that was involved, but I will say the discussion ended with me in frustrated tears in a conversation with a superintendent who claimed to be listening but wasn't hearing me. The one issue I will share is my question about formal training for the new report cards. His answer was that the district doesn't have to provide formal training for everything, and that every building has experts we can learn from. I looked at him in bewilderment and reminded him that report cards and the newly-required gradebook weren't even up live on X2 yet, and so there are no experts. I stand here tonight, on the other side of the door, representing our members, because I'm not afraid. I'm not scared of screenshots and public comments or retaliation, even though I know they're all occurring out there. I'm close enough to retirement that I'm doing the math to see how badly I need my whole pension. I'm fearful of the teacher shortage and what will be left to salvage amongst those of us who have to remain. I'm speaking because we're tired. We are overburdened. We are in our third school year of a pandemic. That's three different sets of students and three different sets of parents we've had to ride this wave with. It is not over, and we are not back to normal. Nothing has changed, and yet everything is different. I could argue that this is the worst year to attempt new report cards and mandatory use of gradebook at the elementary level, but that ship has sailed. It is also just about too late to teach us anything of value before the grading window closes, and we have to print the report cards out to send home for the public to see that we possibly might not know what we are doing because our own district is sending us upriver without a paddle. So I am begging you not to add any more new initiatives this year and to possibly even take some of our current responsibilities away. I will leave you with an open invitation to visit my side of the door anytime, where happiness and learning and fun and kindness happen every day. I have extremely supportive parents and fabulous kiddos. My coworkers are my second family. When my door is closed and I am with my students, I wouldn't trade my job for a million dollars. But standing here on the other side, I'm actually considering trading it for a hefty penalty on my pension. Thank you.
Mr. Grino, did you want to extend the public comment period to complete the list, or just from Ms. Pat?
I looked at the list, it was about five or six.
There are three more.
Three more? I think everybody should hear from everyone. That's what I intended.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Okay, so next up is Cam McKirk.
Mr. Time.
Okay. McKirk, sorry, thank you. Girk. Next up is Karen Costa-Hoffman.
Do you want to do this? I'm not doing very well with it. My name is Karen Costa-Hoffman, and I'm at 38 Perham Street here in Nashua. I have been a teacher now for just a little over two years, so I'm very new. And I am currently over at Birch Hill, working K through 2 Special Education. I work with the most amazing administration and staff at my school. I don't have one bad thing to say about any of them. They have been supportive, they have been beyond helpful, and they have been understanding. I wish I could say the same about Central Office, because I have sent countless emails, I've left countless voicemails, and I've received no response up until within the past couple of days. I have literally used the words in my email, "Please, I am begging you for help." That's a direct quote. "Please, I am begging you for help." No response. When I finally did get a response, it was clearly a canned response that didn't even bother to read the email I sent, asking for the specific type of help that I needed. Essentially, I need testers, because what I am required to do, I have a full caseload and a full teaching schedule. Most days, I don't eat. Most days, I don't take a plan. Most days, I don't have five minutes to go to the bathroom. So I have a full teaching schedule. I have over a dozen kids that I need to test before mid-January. Each of those children take approximately two to four hours each to test. I have to then write a 10- to 12-page testing report on each child. This is in addition to lesson planning for teaching my kiddos that I have on my schedule. I have meetings. I have to schedule my own meetings, and that means that I have to respond to parents who have to, you know, change things as a result of their schedule. All of this while managing the different due dates that are a part of working in the special education realm. In addition to that, I also have to write all of my children's IEPs. I have to do all of the updates for the IEPs of the children that I have currently on my caseload, and I'm going to have to write IEPs for almost all of those children that I tested. To say that, so this is public knowledge, you can easily look it up. I make $45,000. I make $45,000 a year, and I work 60 to 80 hours a week. I hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving break, because I worked. I worked on Thanksgiving. I worked all weekend. And I still can't get a response back from Central Office? What planet am I on, where I have to wait months, weeks, months, to get even a response I get you all are busy. So are we. So are we. We are dealing with behaviors left and right, out-of-control behaviors. We are dealing with referrals in special ed like I've never seen or even heard of before. And we get no support from the people who are supposed to be supporting us. And people wonder why we're upset right now. Let's do a little examining at the higher levels here, and realize that you have some wonderful teachers who are, and it's not just special ed, and it's not just me, morale in this district is on the floor. My school, again, wonderful teachers, the morale is nonexistent. That's a major, major, major problem. You have a second-year teacher here who is telling you that she is this close to quitting, because $45,000 a year to make 60, to do 60 to 80 hours' worth of work per week? Just not worth it anymore. Think about that when you hire. Think about how you, do you want these teachers to stay in this district long-term? Do you want happy, content teachers? Well, not responding when they beg for help is not the way to keep good teachers, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Linda Mangello Walsh.
Hi, can you hear me all right? Linda Mangello Walsh, 207 Manchester Street. I really only came to say two sentences about something on the agenda, but it occurs to me, as I listen to all this hurt and this pain, I see the same thing in my school, I see the same thing with my colleagues, and I would say in general that teachers are really important in the business that we're in, a school district. And I've been teaching for over 20 years. I am working on an exit plan, because we all get into this, and we love it so much, and we can last this long, but then we say, "We can't make it all like Kim Lurgurk until they're 103-years-old in this profession." But it is sad, when you think about trying to make 30 years in this profession, and then you're good at what you do, and you know that you're good at what you do, because your students and your parents tell you, not your administrators, I don't need my administrators to tell me that, but I can't last 30 years in this profession anymore. And that's a really scary thing, and there's a lot more of me that aren't here today, because getting here is super scary. And I'm pretty bold and pretty brave and a pretty vocal, but there's only a small majority of people here that are vocal, because it's terrifying to come before the people that are your bosses and complain about something. And it occurs to me that teachers are at the bottom of the list for when we're looking at what's important in our district. We're at the top of the list in terms of who is important to do the job, but we're at the bottom of the list in terms of being listened to or respected. And that's really frustrating, which leads me into my two sentences I was going to say. This is a friendly recommendation, it is not a complaint, but the more I hear about it, the more it kind of feels that way. Teachers are not complainers. The teachers that last in this district want what's best for Nashua. They chose Nashua for the kids, for the community. We will far outlast any of you in any of your positions that you hold here, because we're here for long-term. It would be nice for us to throw a bone to teachers and make teachers heard. And in tonight's document, the Curriculum Master Plan on Page 4, I do encourage you to look at Page 4 before you decide on approving the document. Teachers shouldn't have to come to a board meeting to fight to get on a committee that has anything to do with curriculum, instruction, or assessment. There are 20 people listed on Page 4 of that document. There is not one teacher on that committee that is teaching full-time. I want that to really sink in, because I don't want what everyone else said to overshadow that. It kind of sends a message to teachers, when you have curriculum committees about curriculum, instruction, and assessment, which is all we do, and we're on Page 9 as being responsible for carrying it out, that not one full-time, teaching-all-day teacher is on that list. Please look at Page 4. Read the amount of people on that committee. It sends a message to teachers, especially at elementary and middle school level, they have no representation on that committee. And although it will be said that coaches are teachers, they are not actively teaching all day, every day. They are great people. That doesn't mean that they're representing what's happening in the classroom now, which in my 20 years of teaching is the worst it's ever been the last two years, this year and last year. People are leaving left and right. We're going to have a problem keeping the dedicated people that are willing to speak at this microphone.
I'll put this back up if anybody wants to sign up for the second public comment. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Ray.
I just wrecked the sound system.
Thank you for all that. I know that was, you guys put a lot of thought into the statements that you gave. I appreciate you guys working with us. We did hear you. I'd summarize everything that you just said, but I want to make sure that you all get to go home to your kids early enough tonight that we're not here too long, but we did hear you. We understand what's going on. Again, stumbling through this, Heather's much better at it, but thank you for all coming. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's comments. Dr. McKinney?
Yes, thank you. Two things for this evening. Happy to report that 712 children were vaccinated at the Public Health Vaccination Clinic at Elm Street Middle School on Saturday, November 20th. 712 total. 666 kids were between the ages of 5 and 11, and 46 kids between the ages of 12 and 17. I want to say thank you to the City of Nashville Division of Public Health and Community Services for being responsive to our families' needs and scheduling the vaccine clinic. I also want to remind families that the second doses will be given next Saturday, Saturday, December 11th, from 9 to 4 at Elm Street Middle School. We also encourage everyone to get vaccinated. Currently, only 52.1% of Nashville residents are vaccinated, and we want to see that percentage rise. The second thing is the annual hat and mitten drive. Thank you to our Rotarians. We appreciate the members of the Rotary Club of Nashville West for making sure our students have adequate protection against the elements of this winter. These Rotarians collected hundreds of hats, mittens, gloves, and scarves for our students from preschool to high school, and our warmest thanks to our school nurses, who supplied the Rotarians with specific needs, from identifying sizes and types of gear to specific desirable styles as needed. And for more than a decade, the Rotarians from Nashville West have quietly raised funds supplemented by personal donations to make sure each school's request for gear goes filled. We especially want to thank two Rotarians for their leadership in this effort, Dr. Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum and Dr. Scott Huffer. Both these doctors are to be committed. They fundraise, they shop, they deliver all they need of gear, and make it as easy as possible for our school nurses to discreetly distribute these items to students they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board response to superintendent's comments. Mr., do you, I'll just go around. Ms. Oden? No? Ms. Brown? Okay. Mr. Grino?
I just wanted to comment on vaccination. I'm glad that it's happening among our students. I'm a little bit concerned at the rising numbers of COVID cases, and it's a little bit disconcerting, and I hope more people get out there, get vaccinated, wear your masks, do everything you can to keep students safe and our staff safe. So I'm just happy to hear about the vaccination that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grino. No? I was able to go there for the vaccine day. It was a lot of fun. We had recognized nurses and doctors from the community that were there helping out, and lots of parents, and just, of course, they had stuffed animals and coloring books, so I was happy. But thank you very much for all of that information. Now we go on to student members of the board comments. You guys can decide who goes first.
I guess I'm up first for today, but I want to touch on a few things. So we, right before Thanksgiving break, we had the annual homecoming on Tuesday. I know for North, it went very well. We had a great, a bunch of students and staff that all volunteered, helped out before and after, and it was a great event, and I think it was really nice to have, you know, a first dan, I remember talking to the janitor, we were setting up, and he was like, "This is the first dance we've had in like two years." I'm like, "I know." I'm like, "It's crazy, you know? We have to make it a good one." And I think it was. I think it was good, you know, get a sense of normalcy and have, I think we had around 250 kids that came to the homecoming, so it was really awesome. And as of now, I know our tryouts, I think, started today for winter sports, for our main sports. I know swim already started, and I think that our sports seasons are coming in full swing, and we're getting ready to get through this break from, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, which is always kind of a fun stretch of school. So, no, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Brunel?
And likewise, South had their homecoming as well, and along with that, our winter sports are starting, and kids are really looking forward to that. And I think after coming off of Thanksgiving break, we're all a little full from Turkey, but I think everybody's really glad to just be back in person and be back in school.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. Mr. Dunn, yeah?
I did want to touch on something, and I don't want to beat around the bush here. And usually, most of my comments are, you know, very positive and what's going on on that look, but I did want to touch on our school culture as a whole. And I think that in front of what I've heard from teachers all around the country, you know, with these TikTok trends and things of getting back in school, it hasn't been pretty, and it hasn't been fun. As a fellow student, walking to the bathroom at both North and South and seeing sanitizer dispensers missing or mirrors missing, I think it's putting on a strain on a whole community, whether you're in California or here, and I think it, as we've seen before here today, our teachers and students that I can speak to are not, it's not going well. And I think that from a student's perspective, at North, we have met with administration, we have met with a group of student leaders to try to curb that, and although, you know, that wasn't full swing, we tried our best to stop that, and we kind of deterred that. But with these trends and what has been happening, they come and go, but it's not fun for anyone. And I think that we've tried our best, at least at North, to kind of reduce the spread and reduce the damage of that, but there's only so much you can do. But I do want to say as a student, I feel for you teachers, and I understand that this is probably one of the worst years of teaching, but although it's, I know as a student, it hasn't been the best in return either, but getting back to school and a little sense of normalcy has really helped us as students. So thank you very much, teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. We just continue to be blessed with amazing students on this board. You guys are so insightful and caring, and you're great leaders within the community. Just happy to have you guys. You guys are products of them, is the thing, so we have to remember. Yep, yep. So, thank you, guys. We don't have any updates for the Budget Committee, but we'll be going on to the Committee on Finance and Operations. Ms. Johnson was unable to continue on with the meeting today. Is Mr. Grino and Ms. Brown, you're on the committee, right?
Yeah, I'm going to do the committee. Dottie and I are both on it.
You two are?
Yep.
Okay. All these nuances, I don't know how Heather keeps everything straight.
So, yeah, so we met on November 9th, and we have a few recommendations for the board this evening. Our first, I would like to move to approve the purchase of a heat-based plasma table from ArcLight Dynamic in the amount of $22,890 with funding through the Perkins Grant.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of accepting, sorry, all those in favor to approve the purchase of the, I think I need glasses, of the heat-based plasma table from ArcLight Dynamic in the amount of $22,890 with funding through the Perkins Grant, say aye. Any nay? Motion passes.
Our next recommendation, I move to approve the purchase of carpet for the district office from Universal Decor in the amount of $39,878 with funding through the escrow
Second?
On the motion to approve the purchase of the carpet for district office for the amount of $39,878, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm just going to let Ms. Brown do all the hard stuff with all the accounts.
I move to approve the purchase of the Combi Oven from Kittredge Equipment for a total price of $17,781, funding from the Food Service Special Revenue Fund, account
Second?
On the motion to approve the purchase of the Combi Oven from the Kittredge Equipment for a total price of $17,781, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes.
And our final recommendation this evening, I move to approve the fiscal year 22 October transfer report.
Second?
On the motion to approve the fiscal year 2022, I can say that alone, October transfer report, all those say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, the Committee on Policy, that's mine, I'll continue on with it. We met on November 16th, 2021. We reviewed several policies, updated and rescinded some, so I'm just going to read through the list here. I was, note, I was pointed out on the policy GBCD, the Background Investigation, there is a typo that needs to be fixed. It was, it needs to be expenses, I think. It's, let me pull it up. Sorry, mine isn't, it's not pulling up the rest of the attachments on here, so one second. It's on the first page, it's paragraph 4. Don't know why I remember that, but I can't remember the word.
Can you just share what the typo is again?
It's after, it's after, it's not prostitute expenditures, it's prostitution offenses, is what it's supposed to be. There we go. Yeah, I know. It's an interesting policy. It's about not to hire. Yeah, yeah, it's just a typo in there. So if we want to hire somebody who has, you know, doesn't fit a background, then those are some of the key points that'll keep you from getting hired, and it's not a, like, it's not, come on in, it's, it's what we like to call a red flag.
I see.
So if we could just fix that.
We have to fix it before we make a motion.
It would be as amended, so I'm going to, I don't know how to do this as the chair and filling in for president, so I'm just going to say I'm looking for, looking for a motion to approve policy GBCD as amended.
So moved. Second?
Thank you. Ms. Brown, seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nay? No, okay. The next policy, I'm looking for, no, I'm just going to say it. I move to approve policy ICA in regards to the school year school calendar. to approve policy ICA in regards to the school year, school calendar. I just need a second.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor to approve policy ICA?
I have one question on that.
Yeah.
So the new plan, I should just bring it before the whole board instead of going through committee? Is that the, because it said, we just axed the line that said instruction committee to Board of Education, so it's going to just, it won't go through committee, it'll just go to this full board, is that the plan?
Right. Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay. Okay. Looking for a motion to approve policy FEA, educational specifications.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. So Ms. Brown moved it, and Mr. Grino seconded. Sorry, I keep switching it up because I'm toggling both roles and I keep forgetting. The best way to go about doing this, so thank you for bearing with me and being kind. Okay, so all those in favor of approving policy FEA, aye.
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 Any nays?
No.
All right. So now, I'm looking for a motion to rescind policy 12212, developing educational specifications.
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Brown motioned it. Just looking for a second.
Second?
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of rescinding policy 12212, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes. Just, let me know if I'm going too fast.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Now I'm looking for a motion to approve policy EGAD, copyright compliance.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Ms. Brown and Mr. Grino, first and seconded. All those in favor of approving policy EGAD, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Now I'm looking for a motion to rescind policy 2260, the old copyright laws policy.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. On the motion to rescind policy 2260, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. The next one is, I'm looking for a motion to rescind policy 6510, large scale and long-term rental of school facilities.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Oden.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Grino. All those in favor of rescinding policy 6510, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes. And on, I'm looking for a motion to rescind policy 12250, equipment and furniture, new facilities.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Oden, thank you, Ms. Brown. All those in favor of rescinding policy 12250, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes again. Our next policy meeting is December 16th, and we will be again reviewing, or 17th, we'll again be reviewing some older policies, cleaning up what we've been looking at. But feel free to join, it's a fun, it's a fun time. So which one?
The long-range capital improvements.
Approve policy FA?
Yeah.
Sorry, I have to go back.
The one after that, rescind policy.
We did that one.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, you're right. But we didn't do this one, right?
Oh, you know what? Because it's not, oh, it's way up here, sorry. So, sorry, we have to go back. I apologize. So I'm looking for a motion to approve policy FA, long-range capital improvements planning. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved. I thought we skipped that one, but then I was, I was thinking as I saw that.
I really, I mean, I have glasses in here, but normally it's just because I need to hold my hair back. But I think I really need it now.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Grino. So all those in favor of approving policy FA, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, thank you. And thank you for helping me with the, anytime you need to jump in and just let me know when I'm doing a bad job, I welcome it. Okay, so Ms. Brown, Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation.
Thank you. So we met on November 15th, and we came with one recommendation out of the committee. We had, we actually, it was a pretty lengthy committee, we had some great presentations and had some really meaningful conversation. So I move to approve the revised curriculum management plan through 2023.
Second?
And if I, if I may, I think it's worth maybe having a little discussion here based on some of the comments, the comment from their final speaker here. Did you have something to add, Ms. Oden?
I can wait until after you.
Okay. So I do think it's really important that we have this. It hasn't been something that just threw together this month. It's been something that I know that the administration's been working on since, we've been talking about it since the beginning of the year, at least since I've been on this committee, as this committee chair. However, I do understand, I am sitting here looking at page four about the design need to establish the Curriculum Development Council membership shall consist of the following core members. It says the direct, the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary, the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, the Director of Special Education, the Director of CTE, the Assistant Director of Career in CTE, Director of Adult Education, Director of Technology, Director Athletics, Physical Education and Health, the Director of Student Services and ELL, the Director of Communications, the Director, the District Elementary, Middle School, Peer Coaches, Director of Title I, and the Head Teachers from nine through 12. And it also says, and other members as designated by the Superintendent of Schools or designee. With that in mind, if I could ask, what is the intent of the district for the other, other members?
So I guess I would speak to three things. One, this is included in the strategic plan. Two, the current plan that was out there is from 2017, it's five years removed. And some of the way it was constructed, it doesn't really align with the way the district is now. So what we're asking for is kind of a working draft to move forward, so we can vet curriculum, see if it's working. The steering committees play a vital role in all this work. So teacher input would be sought at the steering committee level, and then representatives from those steering committees would come to this sort of curriculum PD council to analyze the results. So it could be reps from all three levels, it could be chosen by the steering committees, but they should be the ones kind of vetting the curriculum and then bringing it to us. By and large, when I speak to teachers, many of them recognize that our curriculum is not consistent. And they should have a great role in input, design, construction, all those things. But we just have to kind of get back to that routine of looking at curriculum, seeing if it's working, and keeping the good things, and then proving on the things that are not. We haven't done that work consistently in a number of years. So this is a beginning to that. By no means is this saying this plan is perfect, but I think it's a working draft for two years and not a five-year plan to go ahead and begin the work, and see how it goes, and then bring people back together again and say, this is what's working and what's not. It's not trying to exclude anybody or, you know, mandate curriculum down their throats, which, you know, they have varied experiences. I think we're all just invested in what produces the best results for kids. End of story.
Thank you. Ms. Oden?
First, I should say I have a bias here as a former teacher. I'm not going to support this, and it has to do with what we heard tonight. Education happens in the classroom. The teachers are in the classroom with the kids. We need more bottom-up, not top-down. And I've thought that forever. These people have been very sincere. They care about our kids. They love what they do. And they want to be heard. They want to have some input. I have heard complaints about the report cards. I guess Ms. Gilio has too. A change to a report card should be no surprise two weeks before the report card is due. It's just, you just cannot do that. It's not fair to teachers, it's not fair to kids, and it's not fair to parents. So I'm not going to support this. I think this needs to go back to committee. You need to put some teachers on there, and you need to listen to them. Sorry. Thank you.
Would it be better if we identified teachers now, to, not the teachers, but say that, like, representative from, representatives from each school to be on this? Would that be an easier way of passing this? Or is there so many nuances? Because I know that, I know you guys worked hard on this, and I know it's not jiving with everybody, but there, there must be some middle ground. I don't know if we can reach that tonight, though.
I think it'd be best to ask the teachers.
Yep.
What, what they see. They came here, and it takes a lot to come to a school board meeting and speak publicly. I know, I've done it before, but I, I think this has to be looked at again. If you want buy-in from these people, you've got to let them be part of the process. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
So I have another question for the administration. So the steering committees for the administration, for the curriculum is how you, is how teachers provide input, and they do that, then the directors, which I assume head the steering committees, are the representatives of that group to bring it. How is the selection process gone to get teachers on the steering committees? Is that a volunteer basis? Is there a lottery? How does that happen?
So two things. Years ago, those steering committees met monthly and worked on curriculum. They set the schedule for what they were going to do for curriculum, for professional development. They had a protocol for training, for designing the UBD units. The hope was to return to that this year, to pay teachers an increased rate of $35 an hour, open participation up, have more teachers involved in those committees, meet monthly. But right now, the internal consistency needs to improve across the district. So this is cemented in policy. It's been outdated for a number of years. We would like to partner with teachers and work on the curriculum, but not doing anything, I don't think, is in the best interest of the kids across the district. I think we need to be able to make structured changes and accelerate our curriculum for the needs of kids. So any teacher can participate on those steering committees. A lot of the lead teachers, the coaches, we're happy to open up and meet monthly and compensate teachers for their time, redo the training around UBDs. This work was done in the past with teacher collaboration, participation. I think it needs to be done again, because right now, I'm fairly confident you could select five to seven classrooms at any grade level and walk around the district, and you're not going to see similar things. I'm not saying it has to be cookie gutter, but shouldn't we be doing the same things for all kids to higher results in the end? So this plan is kind of a working draft, again, to try to return to some of those kind of internal structures to make sure the curriculum is at its very best.
Ms. Brown, and then I, sorry. Ms. Brown, then Ms. Gilio has a comment.
If I could just follow up to that. So that is actually one of the reasons that we supported this through committee, is that, is the goal of district-wide, school-wide, grade-level-wide consistency, so that as, you know, elementary students move to middle school, they are coming into sixth grade at the same place. And as they move into high school, they're coming from the separate high schools and feeding back together at the same academic place. And I think the next page that's really important in this plan, in this draft, is, there's a little triangle visual, for those of you who like designs. It says, written, assessed, contin-, it's design, continuous review, and implementation. And it's actually, has arrows going around like this, so that it should be constant. It shouldn't just be, this isn't like, hey, here's one year, we're going to make this up. And I think that's the flaw that we've got going on right now, is that we have been using a methodology that's very old and not really been making it happen. So I think the important part of this is that continuous review is right in the plan, and the assessments, and how we're going to be doing it. I do understand the apprehension that teachers have for wanting to be part of the conversation. And I think it is very important to make sure that they have full access to a good relationship with their directors of their departments, so that they can make sure that they're getting, we're getting unfiltered information from teachers. And so I think that's the level of management that we need to make sure is solidified better in this plan. However, I do think, agree with Dr. McKinney, that it would be a mistake to continue to push this out, push this out, push this out, because we really do need to start working towards our next round of curriculum models. So I am, I'm going to support it. And I think that it's worth coming back to the, I would also support if we really want to send it back to committee. I don't mind addressing it again in December. And if people want to come to the committee, you're welcome to come, and I'll, we'll be happy to hear from you then, too. So if the board would prefer to send it back to committee, I don't mind working on it. We don't, I'll say that we don't mind working on it again. But as opposed to not having a plan at all, I think we should move forward with something. Thank you.
Ms. Gilio?
Dr. McKinney, what process would teachers who wanted to be, have input, would they, who would they contact? Do they start with their building administrators or department heads? How do they volunteer? And I, I don't know where they're going to find the time to volunteer for that, having, understanding how busy they are, but I can understand the desire to be involved with it, too. So I don't know what, if the process is clear. It's not clear to me right now.
The Office of the Assistant Superintendents is responsible for all the steering committees, so contacting their office for the dates and times of the meetings, attending those meetings, and then making sure you sign in, so you're compensated for your time. Those are some of the must-dos for teachers. They're usually published on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
Mr. Grino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little bit confused. I, I, we're voting on this, but I keep hearing the word that this is, even if we vote and approve it, it's still a working draft. So if it's still a working draft, I don't see any reason why we can't bring it back to committee and have teachers show up there at the curriculum committee or a teacher representative and have some input on it. I don't know what, I mean, it is important to have it in place, I understand that, but I don't know what the time constraints are on it. It's, it's up, I guess it's a two-year plan for 2022 and 2023. But I, I would, I would prefer to send it to committee and have, have us work on it again with some teacher input, and then, and then get it through so that everybody's on the same page. That's my, that's my feelings.
Are you making that a motion?
I'll, I'll move to do that, then, to table it, or send it back to committee and then bring it back here.
There's already a motion on the floor. But I, if you want to withdraw.
I'm sorry.
There is, there was a motion on the floor, but.
There was a motion to approve, so I, I guess my motion would be to table it. I can.
I'll withdraw my motion if Mr. Grino wants to move to send it back to committee.
Then, then I'll move to send it back to committee.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, just so I'm clear, there's a policy around having a plan. So the plan is expired, so we have no plan. So the suggestion is to have this plan go back to committee and amend the plan to include broader teacher membership? Is that what the suggestion is?
No. The suggestion is to send it back to The suggestion is to send it back to committee, to, because it's a draft, it's a working draft, to have more teacher input on that, on this document, to have more teacher input, and then to, and then to approve it and send it through.
So just for clarity, this draft that is here went in front of everybody who's a part of the curriculum team. That's all the head teachers, the coaches, was presented to the principals and assistant principals, and district office, and then brought here. So there was a degree of input across the board, and it was built and designed after a plan that was already in place around the same principles, but slightly adapted to the new organizational structure that we have here. We don't have program coordinators and all the different positions that we had long ago. So this is very similar to what was in place back in 2017. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that while everybody had input, it's not going to make everybody happy, but we do have to have a plan to start, to do training, organize PD, put curriculum writing teams together, and then putting things in place so that they're, go through layers of approval before they come online for the next school year. Thank you.
How long has this been expired?
Again, since 2017.
Since 2017. Okay.
So, Mr. Guarino, Ms. Brown removed her motion, and there is currently a motion on the table for Mr. Guarino to table this and bring it back to committee.
Table it.
Is there a second?
I would, I would like to amend his motion.
Mm-hmm.
To have the committee include some of our classroom teachers. Do you mean the curriculum evaluation committee?
Right. At the curriculum committee. That makes sense.
The committee of 20 that did not include any teachers.
So you want this to go back to committee, so that they can update the list of who's involved in the creation of this, to include boots-on-the-ground teachers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd rather take time and get it right than to hurry through and not get it right.
Mm-hmm. Are you amendable to that?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to table the curriculum and evaluation draft to go back to committee, to ensure that we have adequate representation of teachers, provide input to this before we vote on it. Okay. Okay. On that motion to table and bring back to the curriculum and education committee to officially have boots-on-the-ground teachers input with this, sorry, are you getting?
No.
Okay. On that motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Okay. Motion passes. Is there a way that we can go about, I don't mean to micromanage central office, but is there a streamlined, easy way to identify what teachers who want to join can put in input? Is that something that you need anything from us for? Can it be a survey, or interviews, or? Do you want to come up with a way to do that now, or do you want to create that plan back in committee?
Not at this time. We'll come back with an update and a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I have to get back to the. Okay. And that is it for the Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Next up is the Committee on Human Resources.
I'd like to suspend the rules to bring forward the actions of the HR committee meeting held earlier this evening.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. All those in favor of suspending the rules for the meeting earlier, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Move to support the personnel recommendations held in the HR committee earlier this evening. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Giglio. On the motion to approve the, sorry, motion to approve the personnel recommendation dated 11/29/2021, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So now, excuse me. Now we have leads on reports. We have some updates from the JS BBC. The GMP for the new middle school was approved for, I think it was $77.5 million. And the second piece of that was the bus loop at Penachuk has been completed, and they're working on smoothing out the drop-off and pickup times. And I'm hearing they are going well so far. Ms. Giglio, Ms. Brown, you're on those meetings as well. Do you have any updates that I may have missed? That's all of it? Okay. So I think we're still on schedule for breaking ground for the new middle school this summer, right? Anticipated opening 2024?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And now we are going into unfinished business, looking at the reopening updates. Dr. McKinney, do you want to take it away?
When I spoke with President Raymond, we were going to speak about two things here. Just to clarify, the rules of the road right now, and they're always changing, but regarding remote instruction, there was some question about if there's increased numbers around COVID, could we use remote instruction? So I spent time before break speaking to the commissioner and the deputy commissioner, and here are the current state of affairs. One, our first obligation is to make sure we meet the instructional hours for all levels. But, two, all students must have access to full-year, full-day, in-person instruction. So any broad changes in sending schools or grades to remote, we'd have to allow some of the people in those classrooms the option of coming in in person, which would create a domino effect of changing classrooms, and teachers, and assignments, and schedules, and bad scenarios in Aspen X2 SIS. So on top of that, the State Board of Education is revisiting the rules around distance. They're calling it distance learning now, in January and February. So all these rules that I'm sharing with you now could be subject to change within a month or two. So the current rules say we could use go-to-remote instruction when the weather's bad, and some other contingencies, but again, that could change before the end of February. In speaking with the commissioner, the recommendation was, you know, in their, if there are cases or, you know, clusters at route breaks, targeted remote would be best, better than whole district, whole school, numbers of schools, grade levels, so forth and so on. So, well, you know, the reopening plan would have to be amended, and we'd have to make some changes there. I just wanted to clarify what the current guidance is right now, because there was certainly confusion between the superintendents, and I spent time clarifying that. So when there's more information, I'll certainly make it available. The second thing was around, we did get a couple of requests requiring around volunteers coming into the building. Given where we are with the numbers and getting through the holiday break, I'd ask that the recommendation, we stay where we are. I know people want to be with their kids and see the, you know, the memories and all the things. We've tried to do things outside to make it adoptions, but given the weather and so many other things, I'd rather see us wait until revisit that in January, keep getting vaccinated. Hopefully, the kids will get vaccinated as well, and then we can revisit that in January. So those are the only two updates I have regarding reopening.
Ms. Brown?
I wanted to actually, so I did not actually know exactly what the updates were. If they were related to remote learning, I just saw that the reopening plan updates. So I had a couple of notes from some folks I've been chatting with, specifically about the use of lockers at the middle school level as it gets cold. You know, kids bringing coats or boots or cold-weather stuff, hauling their stuff from classroom to classroom. Is there some consideration for allowing locker use at the middle school?
Yes, I know that was a topic of discussion before Thanksgiving break. I'll have to look into that and get back to you. But I do think it makes sense, given the weather. Some classrooms, I think some teachers were working on letting them use the lockers. It wasn't feasible to have all the materials in there. But again, with Mr. Parker not here tonight, I'll look into it and get back to you.
I think I heard, too, they had some standing coat racks. I have one of those kids that refuses to wear a jacket and pants, so he's still going in shorts. He's a New Englander. So I watched that to make sure my name isn't on some list somewhere. Horrible parent. But it, I feel like they sent something out saying that they had the floating coat rack, so if they wanted to bring them in, they could hang them up. But I think that was just a workaround for something, but he's still not wearing a coat. What? Oh, yeah. And he's just like, "And too hot, ma." But he is, he's always sweating with all that hair. He's a warm-blooded kid. Ms. Giglio, did you have something to say?
Yes, I just, I wanted to say that I'm glad that the volunteer aspect came up, because I know we'd received information from parents about it. And I just wanted to say that I know our COVID numbers are really not great in the state right now. And so I understand that this is probably not the time to bring parent volunteers back into the school. But I myself, my whole career in education started when I was a parent volunteer many years ago at New Surles. And volunteers can help alleviate some of the stress that's being put on the teachers, so that as soon as it's practical and healthy and safe to have the volunteers come back, I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Guarino.
Yeah, I have a quick question about video cameras. I remember in, in the peak of the COVID, when we were in remote, that we had, we're going to purchase a whole bunch of video cameras for asynchronous learning, or I think there was a plan to have classrooms would be partially remote and partially in, if my memory serves me correctly, did we purchase, like, do a mass purchase of video cameras for remote learning at one point?
Yeah, I don't think that happened. We ended up buying laptops, which have cameras instead.
Okay.
My memory of what happened.
Okay, yeah, thank you. The reason why I'm asking, it is, it's because I think we, yeah, I know, I want to thank Dr. McKinney for straightening out the, what's going on with remote learning, but the numbers are concerning. I think COVID is going back up again. I don't want to be negative, but we should just be, anything can happen with this COVID. So I don't want us to go remote, but we should be just thinking about, you know, the future and, you know, trying to make Plan A and Plan B as to what, what could happen in the next, over the next year or so. But thank you for that, for that answer.
And that's it? There's anything that, sorry, Ms. Brown?
Sorry. I didn't actually, so my other note this evening, I was going to bring up in new business, but I actually think maybe it's, could maybe fall under this, so I'll just say it. The other question I had was about the menu accuracy of the lunch menu. And I know Ms. Eggle is working her tail off, and I know the food service workers are, you know, completely overwhelmed. So this is in no way trying to make an insult towards that. But in the concept that we are, all students have access to lunches and breakfast, which I think is magnificent, I'm kind of concerned, concerned about the amount of waste we have, because I know there's been, and this is actually happening a lot with the middle schoolers that I know. Students that maybe don't necessarily need a free lunch are going and getting the free lunch but not eating it, or they're getting their, or they're, for example, I will give you the example of last Thursday before Thanksgiving, they went in expecting a Thanksgiving dinner, and it ended up being hamburgers, which is fine. I mean, hamburgers are delicious, but, okay, some hamburgers are delicious. And so I think that there may be a way to both conserve waste and extra work for our food service workers if we updated the menu accuracy, because I think there's a lot of kids that are maybe getting meals that would otherwise bring food from home if there was something else listed. And I understand that's extra work, but I think that kind of goes in the direction of overarching, like, arcing towards better communication in the district and that kind of thing. So I don't know if that falls under reopening plan, but I just put it there. There you go.
I know my kids are really happy that they have pizza every day. They're very happy, little humans. Okay. Maybe you guys can look into that and get back to Ms. Brown. I think we can revisit, once we start allowing visitors back in, we can revisit some safety precautions around that. But I think right now, we can dive right into new business. It looks like we have, and I apologize, and I wasn't in these meetings, Dr. McKinney, do you want to speak to this donation that we've been offered? I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but I didn't want to be like, I know exactly what this is. So I will read it. We are looking to accept, I need a motion to accept the $5,000 donation from the Hollinger Family Foundation for the autism cluster at Fairgrounds Middle School.
So moved?
Oh.
I'll second.
You get to pick who's first, because you've got the pen.
I get, I give Ms. Oden the chance.
And, and Mr. Guarino seconded. All those in favor of accepting the $5,000 donation?
Aye.
Any nays? We want to thank the Hollinger Family Foundation. That'll be a fantastic addition to the Fairgrounds Middle School cluster of kiddos. We're very grateful. Motion passes. Now looking to get a motion to accept the $75,726.86 donation from the Paul L., oh my gosh.
Tringenson?
Tringenson Revocable Trust.
So moved?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Okay.
I, I think he was a math teacher at Nashville High School.
Oh, really?
Was he a math teacher? Social studies? Okay.
Fantastic. That's lovely.
That's a lot of money.
That is a lot of money. Thank you for the, the first and the second. All those in favor of accepting the donation from the Paul L., I just, Tringenson, it's just, it's too small. I keep, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Motion is approved. And I believe that is it. We are on to our final public comment period. Hopefully, everyone who wants to speak has signed up. So I'm just gonna, I'll let you guys know when you hit the three minutes. I don't want you to feel like I'm not listening to you, but I am trying to be cognizant of the time. I know what you guys were saying in the first round was really important for us to hear. However, we did have a rule. We do have a time period, and I'm sure you guys all know how hard it is to keep people on task, so if we could stick to the three minutes without me having to, I don't know, use my mom voice, that would be fantastic. Okay. Thank you, Ray. So first up, Sidney, Sidney LaMontagne. I got one thing right tonight. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Perfect. My name is Sidney LaMontagne, Kessler Farm Drive. First, I just want to say, this is the first school board meeting I've attended, so, man, what a night to pick. Second, I just want to say, Mr. Guarino, thank you for starting a motion to let these teachers speak. These are the people that pay your salaries, although, albeit, very. These are the people that pay your salaries, although, albeit very little, but, and they elect you guys as well. And they're also the ones that teach, teach the children. And if you don't have teachers, you can't teach the kids. But what I've heard earlier in, when they were speaking, was a little concerning when they said that they were, they were nervous to come up and speak about their concerns that they had. That's, that's a little, a little concerning considering that they are, they are the teachers in this, this district. And that their voices should be heard. Because if you don't have teachers, like I said, you don't have someone to teach the kids. So that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. LaMontagne. Next up, I'm not going to do as well this time. Oh, who wrote that out? Oh, you're fantastic. Sarah DeShoniers. DeShoniers?
DeShoniers. DeShoniers.
DeShoniers. She even like wrote it up phonetically for me. And I can't even blame it on the fact that I can't read it because I can see it.
Hi, I'm Sarah DeShoniers, and 207 Manchester Street. I just wanted to bring up for consideration two things from the agenda. And one is for the curriculum map. On page 10, it specifically says that the students' expectations are to understand their learning strengths and needs, meet or exceed their learning requirements of the district curriculum, recognize the impact of their behavior, and to seek assistance. But that seems to also be in conflict with the district's policy of IKE and IKE dash R, which means the, the general summation is K8, kids move on. So we have students at the middle school level who fail every single class of sixth grade and are moved on to seventh. Fail everything in seventh grade, move on to eighth. Fail everything in eighth grade, move on to high school, and it's a game changer. So while the curriculum group is working on this plan, I think a lot of that plan is fabulous. Read through the whole thing, thought it was really good. And I'd love for my kids to meet or exceed expectations. I'm finding it very difficult to get my students to buy in to education when they're getting a mixed message that you should learn, but if you don't, you're moving on. And, and I want them to have that investiture. And I'm seeing it, especially, I teach sixth, seventh, and eighth. And I'm seeing it with my sixth graders, first trimester ends in three days. And they go, well, what happens if I fail this? Do I have to retake it? And I don't want to tell them, no, you just move on, because I feel like that's going to set them back. But I do need to be honest with them. And my seventh graders and my eighth graders know, as long as I'm here, I'm good. Or I don't have to be here. But as long as they're, you know, following the general program. So when you're looking at that, if we could look at that policy and how it's affecting our students, especially at the middle school level, and how that goes into the curriculum plan when we're adjusting for curriculum, that I think a lot of what it had to say was excellent, but we're missing that key element of how to get our kids invested in doing as well as we, we want them to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say your name again, but I don't want to embarrass myself. So next up, we have Sheila Dunbar. Thank you for having an easy name for me.
All right, good evening. My name is Sheila Dunbar. I teach at Panachuk Middle School, seventh grade, social studies. This is my 14th year of teaching and my 10th in the district. My second year at Panachuk. I was at Elm Street for eight. So I would like to reiterate what my colleagues have said regarding morale, workload, and communication. The behaviors in disrespect of some students, some students, is the worst I've ever seen. In my experiences thus far, I have been satisfied as to how my administration has handled those instances where I have had to refer students to the office. And most teachers know, that's the last thing you ever want to do is to refer a student to the office. Let's see. The time that it takes to deal with this is disrupting the learning of those students who are respectful and who do want to learn. I have concern, let's see, I thought I missed. I have concerns about the COVID protocols for when students or teachers have contracted COVID. I understand that because of HIPAA laws, that specific individuals who may have had COVID cannot be identified. I get that. I would, however, like to be informed if someone in my classroom, they don't have to tell me who, has had COVID, and if they may have been contagious while in my classroom. I have 100 students on my team, so I see 100 students every day, if they're in school. We have had a lot of absenteeism. It's very hard to keep up with. Although we spread the desks as far apart as possible, I am still in close contact with my students. Some of those students continue to have difficulty with wearing their masks properly and need multiple reminders about the mask policy, which leaves more time away from teaching. I have a few questions, and I know that you don't usually answer questions during this forum, but I need to make sure that the BOE is aware of these difficulties and inconsistencies. We just, while in this meeting, we received the weekly COVID update from the superintendent. So my questions are, how are those numbers compiled? Like what are the dates of, is it the date that they received the test results? Or is it the date that they have, that admin has been informed? The other question is, how are students, families, teachers, and staff members informed that they may have been exposed to COVID? The reason that I ask is because I informed my principal on November 11th, Veterans Day, that I might have COVID and that I would be out sick the following day on Friday, November 12th. My noticeable symptoms began on Wednesday, November 10th. I believe I was exposed on the 6th or 7th. I was in the classroom with students, 100 students, and other staff members Monday through Wednesday that week. My test results came back positive on Saturday. My principal referred me to HR because they deal with that. HR asked me for the test results and determined that I can return to work on Monday, November 22nd. As far as I know, none of my students or their families were notified that they may have been exposed to COVID. I sent an email to HR on Monday, November 15th, asking what the protocol is regarding notifications of students and parents. I did not receive a reply. Since the beginning of the year, I have had multiple students, at least, I would say probably 10 out of the 100, that informed, that informed me willingly that they had COVID or their family members have had COVID, or that they have specifically have had COVID. I have never been informed that anyone in my classroom has had COVID. Although I may not be over 60 yet, and I am vaccinated, I am still at high risk and would appreciate being informed if I have been exposed to COVID, so that I can make informed decisions about my health. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adam Marku, you're up next.
Adam Marku. I live at Ford Jalory Lane. I'm a president of the Nashville Teachers Union. The first thing I would mention is the presentation from Mount Pleasant. I'm hopeful that the success of that can be multiplied in other buildings across the district. The two principals were very excited about what was happening with those programs. I'm sure that there's a cost somewhere associated with the programs, but I think well worth it. The second presentation, I will fully admit that I'm biased. My child attends Maid Unstable. And that playground is incredible. And that PTO is incredible. And the administration and the teachers in that building and the staff there are great as well. And I, again, fully admit that I'm biased. I want to take a minute to recognize the, the staff of the school district. We have come back from a year of turmoil last year to more turmoil, thinking that it might be easier back at school or better. And I think what was said tonight is true in all aspects, that when you look at the people, whether you're sitting in the horseshoe, you're at central office, you're at one of the 18 buildings, a lot of what's going on is out of our control in terms of re-transitioning back into school. State and federal mandates, rules that really don't make sense. But we have to follow them because that's the way it works. I think what's happened is that a lot of the things you heard tonight are not new. I've been here since 2008 and people stood up here and said the same things in 2008. What's happened is they've been exacerbated by the pandemic, the unknown, and the colossal change in our working conditions, lives of families, whether they're our students, our colleagues, ourselves. And they're hitting a wall. And it's, it's an unfortunate wall to be hitting because the people that spoke tonight do represent other people who are not comfortable coming. It's not easy to stand before the board and your administrators and your colleagues and speak on things that are controversial. I say that, but I do it all the time, so it's whatever. But that, there, it can be concerning and alarming to stand up here. So as I finish up, I want to recognize those people as we are short-staffed, like everyone else. Whether you're a para, a secretary, a food service worker, a teacher, a bus driver, the crossing guard, and I'm probably leaving people out, our school nurses. They keep the schools going with their building administrators. And they're so short-staffed, but yet they keep making it happen. And I wanted to make sure that I recognize them for their role in maintaining our school district during this time and thank them for coming to work in making it happen for their students every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Walsh.
Hi, Linda Walsh, 207 Manchester Street. I just wanted to come back up, I wanted to thank the board. Teachers do just want a voice. We don't want to be seen as complainers. We don't want to be seen as obstructionist. We don't want to be known as being too critical. It's not that at all. It really is that we want to be part of the team because we're doing the work to carry out the mission. So when I read the values and the mission and the, the goals on a document, and I know that I'm in charge of carrying those things out, I just want a place at the table. And I'm not talking about me personally, I am on steering committees. So I'm speaking for the fact that steering committees have not met this year. They've been canceled in my calendar. I have representatives from all four of the subjects at the middle school, and I asked before I came up here to say something falls. So we're, we're not currently having them. In addition, it was not my understanding that steering committees were open to anyone who wanted to attend for all the time that I've been here. And I join any committee that has ever existed that I'm invited to. But it's always been invite only. So maybe that has changed, and we just need to stir up some communication to get that and get some teachers in the roles. I know that the ones that are already in the roles are burnt out. I know there's a lot of people that are going to be resigning from committees when they pick back up again because it's just, this job is too hard right now and it's just, it's an ongoing battle. This job is harder than it's ever been. Coaches can try to represent us, admin can try to represent us. And I am very understanding that I think even central office thinks that they're representing teachers. But teachers, teaching has dramatically changed in the last five years, let alone 10 years. It's changed in the last two years. We are struggling to keep our heads above water. I want to thank the student member that really mentioned that things are not all butterflies and unicorns, not his words. But that he claimed that things are very difficult right now. And I think that we need to get in tune with that. We need to get in tune with the students that are in front of us, the students that are in the schools. This is not normal. We're still not at normal. We all want normal, we all crave normal. I want it more than anything, but it's not normal. We try to take care of teachers in the pandemic. We need to try to take care of teachers in the pandemic because we're trying to take care of the students during the pandemic. COVID is a major challenge. It's not gone away. Student behavior is a hugely growing problem. Teacher absences are not covered. There are no subs. Paras are being pulled from our rooms. They're taken away from special education students to cover for teachers every single day. 10 days when a teacher has out for COVID. It's happened multiple times at my building. I was a neighbor, I am a neighbor, to a teacher out for 10 days. I had to cover two classes for long periods of time. One of the substitutes left the room crying and would not come back, so I just covered two. It's not that I can't do it. I can do it. I can handle the kids in a post-COVID world. I can handle the behavior. I can handle all of it. But for how long? When a substitute cannot cover a classroom because she cries, she has to leave because of behavior issues? We can't eat alive, those of us that can do it. We can't do that. We can't eat us alive because there's no one to take our places. We have three or four positions in our building right now that are not currently filled because no one is applying. We have to act as a team. We have to recognize that we all can't go full speed ahead because we are not in a normal year yet. And when we get to a normal year, I'm all on board, full speed ahead with any initiative you want to throw our way. But right now, we are not okay. We're the only ones that came out to say it. But they're all feeling it. And you need to check with the students and you need to check with the teachers because this is not a normal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Cam McGurk.
Cam McGurk, 72 Charlotte Street. And it's not my 106th year, it's my 54th year with the district. So at times, I keep waiting for you guys to get it right. So I won't leave till you do. But at times, I feel like the district's historian. So I personally knew Dr. Norman Chris Sr., after whom we named Dr. Chris School. And I worked with Dr. Barad Massey when we moved into central office. I also knew Paul Triggensen. And I'm, I'm going to take a moment because obviously, nobody here knew who Paul was. And it's amazing that a man who had no children of his own would give such a wonderful gift to the district that he devoted his professional life to. Paul was born and grew up in a big white house, but with a silo right over the Nashville line in Hollis, right down the road from where north is now, the Triggensen Family Farm, which has been broken up since then. But he was a true Renaissance man. He traveled the world. He was an opera devotee. He was an artist. He could talk to you about any subject. His students adored him. Paul always wore a scarf, was always dressed as if he was going off to the opera. And I think it's wonderful that he would share his legacy with the school district that he worked for. And I don't remember that anybody mentioned or has mentioned what will happen to his gift, whether it specifically will go to a high school level or what. But it, it's just, it warms my heart that Paul Triggensen would do this for the school district. And then I wanted everybody to know what kind of a man he was. One more thing I want to add on a different subject. I want to talk about hope and respect. So I have been here through many, many contract negotiations. I suffered through the 18 I suffered through the 18-day strike in 1970, and I have seen many, many contracts come up for negotiation. Only a handful of them were ever settled when the previous contract was ending, and as the years go on, it seems that it's an expectation that no contract will get settled when the other one ends. And I've decided that it, the people negotiating the contract with our union have no respect for timelines, and I thought to myself, as a staff member, if I said, you know, my IEP is due shortly, but I, I just don't feel like doing it. I don't think I'll respect the timeline. Or teachers have to put in grades for report cards, but you know what? I don't feel like doing it, so I'm not going to respect the timeline. It seems to me that there's no respect for the fact that the board had four years to negotiate a new contract, and I know three months doesn't seem like a long time, but 54 years of watching all of these timelines being ignored when we want to start, everybody's got schedule problems, and we can't blame negotiations on COVID. It's as if there's no expectation from the people who are negotiating with us that you will get it settled before our last contract ends. To me, that sounds disrespectful, and we lose hope. We lose hope for all these reasons. I feel for my colleagues because I benefit from the fact that the vast majority of students I work with do not talk. So therefore, I don't hear the kinds of things that my colleagues have put up with, and they don't, in general, have the cognitive ability to come up with some of the terrible things that I heard tonight. But my heart breaks that people that talked tonight would consider leaving our district bereft of their incredible skills, and the, the people who talked tonight are among our finest, and the fact that they would leave, make financial sacrifices to get away from what is going on in our schools truly breaks my heart. I want to see the next generation of teachers, wherever they are, because we don't have, I heard there's a student-teacher coming to Penner Check, and I thought, oh my God, I don't even know what a student-teacher looks like anymore. We, we have to figure out our contract negotiations so that this is settled, and we have to do something about morale. I've heard this morale problem for decades, but never like this. Never, never that our teachers had such incredible disrespect from some teachers, from some students, obviously not the ones here. But it seems to me that data is important, you know? Long before teachers were forced to use data, science-based professions like speech-language pathology worked on data. But if you don't work on morale and you don't support us in our needs, go back to the days when we actually had professional development that brought us forward, not backwards in what our skill level is, then we are not going to have a district that can even operate on the reduced staff that we will have in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGurk, and thank you for the, the biography of, of the teacher that left us the, the trust. I, I didn't know about that, so thank you for sharing that. That's, that's the kind of teacher I'd like to have one day. Uh, one day. I have big plans to go back to elementary school, apparently. Okay, well, thank you again very much for coming out and for public comment. It is now board member comment time. We can just bop around the horseshoe. Ms. Oden.
I want to thank all the teachers that came out. I know it's not easy. I have heard, because I know a lot of teachers, I've worked with a lot of them, I've heard much from them of what you have said tonight. This is different. It, it is much harder. Things are not back to normal at all. I will say, communication is critical. I had suggested to the previous superintendent that he reinstitute something called superintendent's cabinet. It was a method that was used once a month for a teacher from each school to go to central office and, and share good things, concerns, what's going well, what's not. So the communication was there from each level at each school, and the staff at each school voted to send a representative. It was at the school level that that determination was made, and I think it helped with communication. I think sometimes, I, I guess one of the things that struck me, I, I was a representative from Amherst Street for a while, and they were talking about teacher evaluations, and a teacher, at the time there was one high school, and the teacher said, I would just love it if somebody would come into my room and see that I'm alive. There were no, no evaluations being done, and I know a lot of that has changed. I understand what people were saying tonight about maybe you don't need to do quite as many evaluations during this time because teachers are pressed, they're stressed. Students and families are the same way, and administrators are. You usually can walk into a room and know if good teaching's going on. You can see kids engaged. You can see things around the room, cues. So maybe, maybe that might be something that administration could look at, but I, I wish superintendent's cabinet could be considered. I know I was on it with Ms. Parody when, when she was a teacher at Fairgrounds Elementary. She, Mr. Giuliano always, always used to call on her because she always had something to say, but I, I just think that would be healthy for communication in the district. So it's tou, it's a, we're in tough times, and here in New Hampshire, we're probably in tougher times than anybody in the country when you look at putting a bounty on teachers' backs, when you look what's happening with the state budget and what's happening with the education savings accounts. I don't know how many of you are following that, but they have taken the limits off. It was three times the poverty rate. Now, no matter how much money you have, you can, you can be reimbursed. The commissioner of education originally had said there were going to be 28 kids and a, a cost of, I can't remember, a few hundred thousand dollars. Now there's probably between 1,500 and 1,600 kids that they're looking at, and we're close to $9 million what's going to have to be paid, and a lot of that in towns and city is going to be on the taxpayers' back. So we, we are in deep sneakers here in New Hampshire. Education across the country is in deep trouble, but public education in New Hampshire is being attacked every day, up and conquered. So teachers, thank you for all you do, and I, I wish you all the best, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Ms. Brown.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Hollinger Family Foundation for their generous donation, and also, of course, the Paul Triggensen Trust and Revocable Trust for their generosity. Next, I'd like to thank the Mount Dunstable and Mount Pleasant schools for their presentations. Those were really excellent, and it was a great way to start off the evening. And I want to thank everybody who came out to speak tonight and the administration for preparing the agenda and everything on it. I know you guys put a lot of work into everything you bring before us to present. I want to thank all of the union members that came out to speak so passionately. I think it's very clear that the world is still feeling the effects of last school year, what the continued high-pressure, high-stress situation where we want to see things get back to where they normally are, but also not just to where they were, but to move forward and make things better here in Nashua. Our students deserve it. Our next generation of teachers deserve it, and I have faith and hope that we're going to find a way for administration, parents, board members, union members, teachers, custodians, all, all the people that make the school district and the city what it's supposed to be, we're going to come together and move the city forward and for our children here in our education system, and also for the next generation, so that we can have them in our spot someday and representing future generations as well. So thank you for everyone who, it's clear that the level of passion that's come out tonight, that everybody needs a voice, and hopefully we can work together to make sure that everyone is fairly represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank all the teachers for coming here to educate this board regarding some issues that are happening in our district. Some of those issues are very disturbing. I can't thank our teachers enough for their hard work. The lack of respect toward our teachers is out of control. I, I don't have to tell people that, and it, it comes from somewhere. You know, the, the lack of respect from those kids towards our teachers that we heard, it comes from somewhere. It comes from the top down, whether it's our governor, whether it's our, our director of education, whether it's from people in, in society or people talking about public schools who have no idea what they're talking about and arguing about indoctrinating our kids. It's a lack of respect for the professionalism of our teachers. So we, we owe our teachers, we owe them an apology for that lack of respect, but we owe our teachers so much more. We, we owe our teachers action, some positive action, towards getting them the things they need to do their job, and we're not doing that. And, and, and I, we need to listen to our teachers who are telling us that, and, and we, we owe it to them to give them, give them what they need, the resources they need, and the working conditions they need so that they can do their job. This lack of respect is out of control, and if we don't, I, I think there's a lot of people that don't understand, if we lose our public education, it, it's under attack as we heard earlier. If we lose our public education, people, people, it's being pulled out, right out from under, under our rug, and, and we don't even know it. And I hate to, people to look back and say, you know, we, what did we do? You know? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Gilio.
Many have spoken more eloquently than I can, so I'm going to keep it really brief. As a retired educator, I, I appreciate all of you, all of the staff who go to the schools every day and work so hard. We definitely need to work with you to do whatever can be done. I wish I had a magic pill that would cure the virus. That would help a lot, but I don't think it's out there, or I don't have it, I swear. But I, I want to thank all of you for coming out and for representing the people who weren't able to come out, and I appreciate all of the staff, and thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Well, I guess that kind of wraps it up. You guys are amazing. Our teachers are the backbone of our communities, and I know you guys know that, and it doesn't feel like it in the schools right now, and I want to, I feel like everybody's working their hardest, no matter what angle you're looking at it from, but I do want to apologize for the behaviors that you're getting from the kids in school. There's, your hands are tied in, you know, to quote the office, I've used carrots, I've used sticks. How do you, how do you fix behavior like that when it's obviously a much bigger issue than just what's going on in your classroom? But you do have the support from the board in making things better for you. As incrementally as possible, we support administration in what they're trying to do to also get the ball rolling. It's a really tough road to navigate. There are many, many facets going into this, and sometimes it feels like a tightrope, and we're all very worried about falling off each side. But I want to thank you guys for coming out. I want to thank you for putting up with me. This, I don't know how Heather does it. I've had, like, high blood pressure, and this is horrible.
You did fine.
But I want to thank you guys. I want to just put a shout-out to Ms. Raymond for doing this. This is, this is a lot of work. This is a lot of balls in the air. I think I have eggs, and I think they've all landed on me. So thank you, Ms. Raymond. Hope you're feeling better. But thank you, teachers. Thank you, administration. Thank you, board members, for coming, and thank you to our student reps who show us that things are going well, for, for probably more of the kids than, than we're hearing about right now. But thank you guys very much. I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Did Dottie do it?
Did you motion, Dottie?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Oden, thank you, Ms. Oden.
Second.
And Ms. Gilio seconded. On the motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay. The motion is officially, the meeting is officially adjourned. What?
8:31.
It got canceled.
Yeah.
So the meeting is officially adjourned at 8:30.